All right, it's six o'clock, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. This is the Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting Wednesday, March 12, 2025. Roll call, please.
Zamora.
Here.
Harmon.
Here.
Mutros.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Whitbeck.
Here.
We have the full commission tonight, so we'll move on on the agenda. Any conflict of interest declarations from any commissioners?
No.
Seeing none, moving on, no special presentation. That leads us to our first action item, item four, Consent Calendar. I have any questions, comments on Consent Calendar, which is the minutes for our last meeting?
No.
No.
Hearing no questions, I would entertain a motion approved.
So moved.
This is Commissioner Larson and Second Commissioner Harmon. All those favors, say aye.
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 Can you oppose? Motion carries. All right, so that moves us to review the opening procedure. So this is the regular scheduled meeting for the Caldwell Planning and Zoning Commission. We serve both in a decision-making capacity and an advisory capacity for the mayor and city council. There are two types of of public hearings that this commission conducts. The first is the legislative hearing whereby we formulate recommendations on certain land use requests. Our recommendations are then forwarded on to the city council who makes the decisions on legislative manners. The second type is a quasi judicial hearing, which includes a consideration of a land use request such as an annexation, reasonable classification, or approval of a subdivision preliminary plat. The public hearing procedures required by IDO code are as follows. Oral written testimony will be accepted by those who have signed up to speak prior to the hearing being declared open. When public testimony, when providing public testimony, please provide, please come up to the podium and state your name and address, which will be included in the record. Staff will first present a report regarding the application being considered. Then this is followed by the public testimony where the applicant or applicant's representative will have, will be able to present a summary of their request for no more than 10 minutes. Testimony of those in support will be taken, followed by those in a neutral position, find those in opposition for no more than three minutes. That will then be offered, offered an opportunity for rebuttal. After that, we'll close public testimony and the public portion of that public hearing and no new oral written testimony will be allowed. So with that, move on, there's no old business. So our next item is item seven on the agenda, new business is the action item, case number zero eight twenty-five dash zero 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 one. Staff, report, please.
Good evening, commissioners. Robin Collins, Community Development Director, City of Caldwell. We're here tonight to present to you the proposed zoning ordinance tax amendments. These are the same amendments that you, we went through at the last meeting in the workshop. We've made a few changes to those based on commission's comments and suggestions. So we're gonna go through the presentation because this took four hours last time. We're not gonna go through it as in detail in some of the chapters unless the commission wishes us to go further in detail. For the public, we'll go through some of those chapters that are more relevant to the public, like the landscaping, the density, those types of things. The first few chapters where it's more administrative and policy stuff, we're just gonna touch on that. But if you have any questions, again, please feel free to to ask us. So again, just for your purposes, because I know Commissioner Harmon wasn't here last time, and for the public, recap, this is a continuation of what we talked about last year and the year before, about a whole bunch of amendment packages coming forward in pieces for chapter 10 and chapter 11, which is the zoning and subdivision regulations. Right now, we're primarily focused on the zoning regulations, but you'll see a few little changes in here that we mentioned at the last meeting for subdivisions. Again, we held workshops with the council to communicate and discuss substantial amendments, and this is amendment package number two. Purpose of the amendments, again, is just to reorganize and reformat, so that's why you're gonna see a lot of changes tonight. And we'll go through that in a second, because we are reformatting the code. And to do that, there's a lot of moving parts and pieces that happen at one time. There's a lot of minor and editorial revisions to the code, mainly to resolve conflicts, inconsistencies, lack of clarity, redundancies. You know, over the years, a lot of changes have been made to the code, and when you make a lot of changes like that, sometimes that happens and you gotta go back and review the whole thing. Some of the changes are to reflect current policies, procedures, and practices, also to implement our new comprehensive plan that was just adopted. Update outdated code sections, make the code more efficient, and to put provisions in the code where we didn't have those provisions, where we were struggling with those when certain projects come in. So now we've added some code sections where the code was previously silent. These are all the moving parts, just gonna go through this really quickly. So you have a whole bunch of chapters here, basically, we're starting with chapter 10, Article 12. We need to move that into Article eight to free that up. The reason we wanna free that up is Article 12 is gonna contain all of our specific use provisions. So those are specific to a use, so they have more requirements than the baseline requirements. And so on the next group of bubbles there, you'll see that all of those Article two, three, four, five, six will be freed up as we move things around. And we'll move those to that Article 12, because those are a lot of specific use provisions. And then it'll free up sections two, four, five, and six. And then on the bottom bubble, you'll have Article seven and Article eight, which will be freed up, because those will be moved into Article two. And I know this probably doesn't mean anything to you right now, because I'm just talking about articles. But basically, we're moving stuff around to make more sense. So things were spread out through the code. So you could go to the code in five different sections and find something about an R1 zoning district. We're trying to move everything that has to do with residential districts into one article. Everything that has to do with commercial into one article. And that's where you'll see this right here. So to do that, we have to move a lot of stuff around to be able to reform out the code like this. And then those specific use provisions, you know, there are different articles throughout the code, different sections that had specific conditions for, say, like temporary uses or home occupations. And we're moving those all into one section, so people know where to go to find it, and they don't have to like try to figure out where it is in the code. So we're gonna go through some of the minor amendments first, kinda like we did in the workshop. The ones that are highlighted when we go through this, we're gonna save those till the end, because those are more detailed. Those will be the ones like the multifamily development code, the landscaping code, the density bonus program. So we'll wait till the end to kinda go into detail with those. So chapter 10, Article one. This is pretty much the main chapter of the code, this is where it creates the ordinances. We just have a lot of editorial amendments to this, this is more administratively. It doesn't have any impact to the public in this particular chapter. We're moving a lot of stuff out of this chapter and just kinda reformatting the look of it. At the end of this chapter, the only thing that does have applicability to the public would be the definition section. We, throughout the code, like every article in the code had its own set of definitions. We moved all the definitions from all those articles into one specific location. There were some comments from the commissioners last time on on definitions, so we did go back, change some of the definitions, made sure we started them like, for instance, impact fees, then the the subtitle after it, so it clarifies what that definition goes to. So we made those changes as asked. In Article two, this is our our actualized zoning district chapter. It's, this chapter is supposed to have regulations that are applicable to all zoning districts, regardless of what you're in. And so we, out of this chapter, we deleted the land use schedules. The reason we did that is again, because we created the articles for residential districts, commercial districts, and whatever. And those land use schedules will be moved over into those specific articles, so they'll have their own land use schedule, and we'll talk about that a little bit later. We did go through, we moved regulations again for accessory uses. I think, oh, the sign regulations, yeah. In this chapter, did have the sign regulations. We did redo all of the sign code regulations. There is case law out there where people have actually been sued, because they have tried to regulate the content of signs. And the planning case law says you cannot regulate the content of what they say on a sign. It has to be content, it has to be content neutral. So we had to redo our entire sign code to make it content neutral. The biggest changes we made to the sign code is we are no longer allowing pole signs within the city, with the exception of within 500 feet of the interstate or the highways. And that would be your billboard signs. But these tall freestanding signs that just have a single pole or even a double pole, we're no longer allowing those. It's not that we're taking away the allowance for a tall sign, but we're saying it has to be a monument sign. It can be 15 foot tall or 25 feet tall, but it has to be monument. So you're gonna have a nice base on it, you're not gonna see these poles. So just kinda trying to dress things up a little bit. The other thing that probably the biggest change is that we're no longer allowing standalone reader board signs all over the place. You can still have a reader board, but it has to be part of your freestanding sign. You can't just have a reader board out there all by itself. And then we made some editorial changes for clarity. The other biggest change on the signs is on freestanding signs. In the code, there was just this random sizing for whatever. We did some studies on how to size signs appropriately, and there is a direct correlation with the size of a sign and the height of a sign based on the type of roadway and the speed limit. So we've incorporated a table within our code that talks about the size of a sign and the height based on whether it's a major arterial, whether it's a collector, whether it's a local roadway, et cetera. And again, we'll get into the parking regulations in more detail as we go along. Any questions so far? Okay. So, again, in Article two, we made some minor changes to the fencing regulations, relocated, again, some of those specific use provisions, home occupations, and daycare into Article 12. We moved provisions for landscaping, buffering, and screening into 100209. We relocated wireless communication facilities into Article 12. And then the last four sections that you see on the screen, because we relocated those, we've deleted those sections out of this article, because they're no longer valid. Article three is our administrative code. This is where you have a lot of the administrative processes and things like that. Minor editorial edits to clarify special use permit processes and their expiration dates. This is, was to provide more clarity, we didn't really change anything in those expiration dates or the edits that we did for the process, it just didn't read right. And so we kinda reworded it. In this section, we did add provisions to better explain the design review process. In the current code, the design review is only applicable in the downtown district, in the city center area. We are gonna expand that to design review being required in all of the downtown districts. You'll also see as we get further along in the amendments that a lot of the overlay areas are gonna require a design review. So like along your major gateways and corridors, in your historic districts, and some of your scenic districts like Indian Creek Corridor, those types of things are gonna require design review. And then this is where we put the new section on the density bonus program. And Joe will go through that in more detail here in just a minute. We did not make any changes to Article four, are you excited about that? We left one article without changes. We're gonna start with Article, just this common amendment section, so this is in Article five through nine. Again, five through nine is where we'll have residential districts, commercial districts, manufacturing districts, urban core districts, and special purpose districts. These things that are shown on the screen are common amendments throughout all of them. So obviously, we created the intent, the zoning district named table, the explanation of the land use table, the zoning purpose statements, we moved from Article one, but we did make some changes to those to better reflect what those zoning districts should entail based on what we're currently seeing, but also the new comp plan that was adopted. We created land use tables and dimensional standards tables specific to each district. Some land uses were consolidated into a main category. We had, and for instance, I know you missed this last time, Commissioner Harmon, we have a plethora of definitions right now in our code for retail. Retail this, retail that, and a lot of it was like, retail is retail is retail unless you have a specific type of retail you don't like. And so we categorized retail based more on square footage, because that's really where you get the impact, is how large that retail store is. But there were some that we left out, because we knew that those were of concern to the commission or the council, like tobacco vape stores, to leave those separate, so that those could require an S U P. But most of the other ones like, you know, a shoe store and a general grocery store versus a convenience store, we just put those into retail general categories. One of the biggest changes with this one, which we felt was really great, was in our current code, multi multifamily starts at seven dwelling units or more, which can be problematic, right, if you want to introduce some additional multifamily development requirements. We've changed the code now, or we're proposing to change it tonight with you guys, that multifamily starts at three dwelling units. So triplexing up is considered multifamily. What that'll do is it'll trigger any triplexing up to meet the new multifamily development code section, which just has some additional criteria that Joe will go through on some landscaping and buffering, and, you know, how the buildings should be placed on this site and what they look like, what happens when they're next to single family, those types of things. We split townhomes into two categories, we did three or less or four or more. This was done specifically just to better regulate mass and scale, because sometimes you get what I would call like row housing, or, you know, eight townhomes in a row. Sometimes that can look pretty big. So if you put those in different categories, you can regulate them a little bit differently. We added some important critical footnotes, some text for clarity. We did change the way setbacks are measured. Our code currently tells you to measure the setbacks from the back of this curb, the back of the sidewalk. And in most instances, you should be measuring it from the property line. So we've kinda changed that language a little bit in there, there's still some allowances based on certain cases, but for the most part, they're measured from the back of your property line. And then we changed the way we measure height of buildings. So in here, you'll see we increased building heights by like five feet, but we really didn't increase the building heights by five feet. We just changed how we measure it, because in the current code, it says like, for instance, residential is 25 feet high, but it's measured to the average roof height. What we've done is said 30 foot high, but we're measuring to the highest peak of the roof. Because it just makes more sense, it's easier to measure and you get a more accurate measurement. Some of the other common amendments to land uses, we created a couple categories for mixed use. So a small scale is your vertical mixed use. Your large scale is horizontal mixed use, could have some small scale in it, but it's it's a bigger project. We created a category for emergency shelters, and we talked a little bit about this last meeting. We never really had a separate category for domestic violence trafficking and sexual exploitation shelters. And all other shelters in the code are S U Ps. We put this in there because we put it as an outright permitted use, and that's for the safety of the survivors that are in those facilities. We added a category for community gardens, correctional detention facilities. We did this one also, because most of the public facilities in there are maybe a permitted use, but we felt like a correctional detention facility probably needs a little bit more review and some conditions on it, so we created a separate category. Cottage industries, these are very similar to a craftsman artisan type manufacturing, except this is specific to single family homes. So where a home occupation, you can't sell stuff out of your house at a home occupation. In a cottage industry, you're allowed to sell some things from that home. And those are allowed in some zones, not all, but like your traditional neighborhood or residential that's in a downtown district, it makes sense to have that as an allowed. We also added a dwelling caretaker. We added a category for boutique hotels, the difference between that and a standard hotel is just the room count. So being able to regulate a boutique hotel where it has less than 100 rooms versus a hotel that you might see in downtown Boise that has, you know, 500 rooms. Just to be able to regulate that a little differently. Same thing with long-term extended stay hotels. Wanted the opportunity to regulate that a little differently, because when people stay in those, it is different, right, they're there for longer periods of time, you don't have the the turnover. So thought it might be good to regulate those separately. We added a category for cottage courts and housing, we never really had one before. This is those little patio homes that maybe they have a common space in the middle, and they're sharing that common space as kind of their back patio backyard kind of area. We added a definition and a land use category for a live work unit. This is where you would actually have to live upstairs and have your business downstairs. And there are restrictions on what percentage of that can be your business and that type of thing. Flex space, it's it's an entrepreneurial incubator is what we call it. It's kinda where you can have office showroom or retail kind of in the front, and maybe you've got some warehouse or a little small manufacturing in the back. But it's really for those entrepreneurs that don't have the clientele or just don't have the money yet to buy a you know, a site-built structure that's out there, a brick and mortar building, and so this is a good way for them to start. We already allow mobile food units, but we didn't have anything that really talked about a mobile food unit park or court. Those are getting very trendy and popular, so we have added something in the code for that. Retail sales lots. These have been interesting, those, this is one of those, it was silent in the code, and we realized we needed something. These are like where you have a lot, and they wanna put a bunch of storage sheds out there and sell them. Or a lot that sells mobile homes, or a lot that sells tiny homes. And what does that really look like? You know, because you've got bigger structures now that are just sitting there and a lot of, sitting on pavement with nothing. We added a category for day shelter, which could include a lot of things, it could include social services for low-income people or somebody that needs, you've seen some places where they have ability for them to take a shower, if somebody can't take a shower. We did add something in there for that, we talked about emergency shelters. And then we added U-Pic farms, because those are pretty trendy, and our code was pretty silent on those as well. Any questions so far? I know I'm going fast, but I'm trying to make it not a four-hour meeting again for you guys. Okay, Article five. So this is the residential zoning district article. So in this one, we we provisions for manufactured homes and developments were moved out of here to Article 12. All regulations that were specific to all of the R districts, the RS1 through R3, were moved from various sections of the code into this central location. In this chapter, we did reduce the minimum lot size for R2 and R3 zones only, which made sense, because the square footage that was in there was really more relevant to a single-family R1 neighborhood and not to do that higher density R2, R3. So it better aligns with that. We did add a density table. We kept a footnote though, as discussed with city council, that the R1 zone is prohibited from density bonuses. So even though the comp plan showed, you know, a density bonus, you know, it was a recommendation, the code is not going to allow for density bonuses in the R1 zone. So if somebody wanted to do a density increase, they'd have to come and rezone, which would come before you guys. And then we added a density bonus explanation for the R2 and R3 zones. We also made multifamily with seven or more units and S U P at the council level. That was a request by council that anything that is a large multifamily development, they wanna see it at the council level, so we have changed that. Some of the big changes that we made to address that missing middle housing and affordable housing is we made accessory dwelling units a permitted use with any single-family home. Of course, there are restrictions on it, there are size restrictions and height restrictions and placement restrictions. We made duplexes a permitted use in the RS1, RS2, and R1 zone. We made an allowance for neighborhood commercial uses, this was a big one, and this was brought up during the comp plan, where people were saying that in the residential neighborhoods, they really wanna see more commercials, so that they're not having to drive long distances to have neighborhood services. So we've made an allowance, it was in the comp plan, but it's also in the code now, where along major intersections or highway frontages, you could have neighborhood commercial services, like you could have a little restaurant, you could have a little coffee shop, you could have a dentist, so that you don't have all this residential and no services nearby. We did keep the tattoo and body piercing studios with an S U P. And then storage units, we did make those an S U P, but we added an allowance in there. If they're internal to a residential development and not open to the public, and they're only serving the residents of the development, then it could be a permitted use as part of the development. Any questions on residential so far? Okay. Article six is our commercial zoning districts. So again, we moved the provisions for RV parks into Article 12. All the regulations for the C1, C2, C3, C4, and highway corridor zone, we moved into this article. We did reduce some of the front setbacks and rear yard setbacks in the C1 zone. The reason we did this is to accommodate putting those buildings closer to the street and the parking behind the buildings. It's more aesthetically pleasing, it also creates a more pedestrian environment, which is what you want in those C1 neighborhoods. And then the density, you'll see a density chart in there, but you'll also see that it's only applicable to projects in the highway corridor zone, because highway corridor is the only one that allows for residential to be a part of it. So even in the comp plan where it said like a C1, C2, C3 is a compatible zoning district in the mixed use designation, if somebody wanted to do residential mixed use, they would have to rezone to highway corridor. And we would have an opportunity to see that. Also, again, made multifamily and S U P at the council level. We deleted the allowance for manufactured and mobile homes in the commercial zones. I don't know why that was still in the code, to allow any residential in a commercial zone, but we deleted that. Again, storage units, we made those an S U P at the council level, that was at their direction. And then we did split some definitions into two categories to allow us to regulate the intensity, like fitness facilities, you have a large or small scale fitness facility. Mixed use, again, small scale, large scale. Equipment repair and service, because there's different kinds of equipment repair, you could have tractors versus, you know, a lawnmower. So we wanna be able to regulate those differently. And then we split breweries into small scale, large scale, and Um, and then we split breweries into small-scale, large-scale and also distilleries into small-scale, large-scale. Any questions on commercial? Am I going too fast? Okay. Article Seven is our manufacturing and industrial zoning districts. Um, this used to be the landscaping section, so we moved provisions for landscaping into Article Two. We moved everything that had to do with the M1, M2 and IP, which is our industrial park zoning designations into this article. We did add a provision for all industrial land uses to be in in an enclosed building if they're within five hundred feet of a residential district or structure. Because we felt like that was necessary because a lot of like the M1 zone in the urban rental area, there are some custom homes out there mixed in with the M1, M2. We wanted to protect them. So that there was no outdoor industrial uses within five hundred feet of them. Um, we did add a minimum front yard and rear yard setback, um, because there wasn't one. And we also added a footnote that if you are adjacent to a residential property, your setback has to increase to forty feet. Again, trying to protect those those existing residential neighborhoods that are currently in mixed in with that urban rental area. And then we added the maximum height requirement also if you're located next to residential unless you want to obtain an SUP for a height exception. Um, because in the industrial zoning, there's no height maximums. And so we left that in there. Um, in this land use table, and maybe I'm already going to talk about it. Yep. I was getting ahead of myself. Add an allowance for compatible commercial uses within the zone. This complies with the comprehensive plan. We already had some commercial uses that were allowed in industrial zones, but we retook a lick, retook a look at the land use schedule. And there's a lot more commercial uses that are compatible with light industrial uses, especially in today's day. Because like even a brewery is considered light industrial. And so there's a, there's a lot of uses that's compatible with that. We changed where some of the uses are allowed. Um, based on like M1 is supposed to be your light to medium industrial and M2 being your more intense. And what we found when we went through land use schedule is that a lot of the existing land uses, there was heavy dust, heavy industrial uses allowed in the M1 zone. So we've changed that and made sure that that all aligns appropriately where they should be. Again, deleted land uses that are not compatible in an industrial zone. Um, like manufactured and mobile homes were allowed in an industrial zone, so we deleted that. And again, we made storage units require an SUP at the council level. Urban core zoning districts, this term will be new to you. Um, what this is, is this is the downtown and the traditional neighborhood. So in the, in the current code, you know it as a central business district and mixed-use districts. We've just retitled them to urban core because it sounds really cool. And we moved the tree ordinance out of this into Article Two. And we moved all regulations applicable to downtown into this article. As I mentioned at the last workshop, this article took a lot, a lot of cleanup. And I think I was supposed to turn this over to you, wasn't I? Sorry. This article took a lot of cleanup because in our current code, they really never, they didn't, they never had a central business zoning district that was ever established. They had overlays that they were, that should have been overlays that that were never established. So we had to go back and and fix a lot of code stuff. Um, we created a minimum lot size in the traditional neighborhood. It didn't have one. Um, we included minimum stories for new construction in the downtown. That's consistent with the current design guidelines that we have adopted and the comp plan. It's just some of this stuff never got put in there. Um, we increased the setbacks in the traditional neighborhood. We reduced the maximum height in the traditional neighborhood from fifty-five to forty. Um, and the traditional neighborhood is now considered a transitional area from our downtown because it's a mixed-use area too. Very similar to the downtown, small lots, kind of cottage-looking. Um, could repurpose a lot of those things for commercial. Um, we changed some of the text within the design standards for downtown from should to shall. Um, again, I don't know why you would have design requirements in the code that say should. So we changed them to shall. One thing I mentioned last time that may not be popular, um, in the code, but we are proposing that vacant lots in the downtown. Um, if they're unutilized for a hundred and eighty days, that they be landscaped similar to a pocket park or urban garden to prevent slum and blight. And this is in the city center area. We are proposing prohibiting chain link in the downtown except for construction sites. Um, we created a more robust property and building maintenance section for downtown. We revised the parking standards in the downtown. When you take a first glance at it, you may be like, whoa. Because it says that you would meet half of the requirement of the origin of the regular parking standards. But actually, Joe will talk about that. He's beefed up the parking standards a lot in the regular section. And meeting half of that is actually a lot more than what's currently in the code. But what we did say is that you have to meet full parking standards for residential. So no reduction for multifamily or apartments in the downtown. You've got to be able to park them. Um, again, we revised the entire sign section. We're no longer allowing freestanding signs which in this, within the city center because we want them to be more pedestrian scale. Um, we are going to require all properties in the downtown to comply with the design standards. Prohibiting floodlights except within alleys. And you'll see in the code, there's a whole bunch of photos and landscaping and tree species. That was in our downtown master framework plan, but it never got put into the code. And we've been scratching our head for I don't know how many years, like, why is there no landscaping requirements in downtown, you know, and stuff? Well, now it's in there. Um, so I think that'll be a good change. Again, multifamily SUP at council level. We removed the allowance for gas stations, car washes, warehouse and body shops in downtown and the traditional neighborhood. Um, those are just not aesthetically pleasing land uses in a downtown environment. Prohibited drive-throughs in the downtown city center. Uh, we are encouraging walk-up windows um, in the downtown. Made clubs and lodges and churches and SUP in the downtown and traditional neighborhood zone. Made triplexes, fourplexes and small-scale multifamily permitted in the traditional neighborhood. Uh, but made triplexes and fourplexes not permitted in the downtown city center and an SUP in the central business. And then we prohibited duplexes in the downtown zones. And we made large hotels an SUP in the downtown zone. So boutique is allowed, but if you're over that hundred rooms, we want to take a look at it, see what it looks like. Prohibited liquor stores in the downtown, only in the city center. Uh, prohibited retail sales with gas stations in the traditional neighborhood. Made auto repair a prohibited use in the traditional neighborhood. Um, there were some other things that we, when we get to the overlay, we'll talk about that is also prohibiting stuff in the traditional neighborhood like car sales and stuff. Because again, it's a traditional neighborhood. It's an urban neighborhood. Those are not the types of uses that we want to see in that neighborhood. And then we made standalone private parking lots prohibited in the traditional neighborhood and downtown city center. Um, because if you're going to have just asphalt, blacktop in your downtown, those should be public parking lots and not just for private use. So we're showing those as prohibited. And I'm going to turn this over to Joe because I kind of stole the show and I was supposed to let him come up here sooner. Did you guys have any questions so far on what I went through?
Commissioners? I had a quick question. I was trying to look at the, if there were fence, yeah, thank you, Chair, front fence clarifications for downtown. And I just, I saw that you limited it, but I didn't see that you actually specified what types are allowed.
So it would come just out of our fencing regulations, which is another section.
Okay.
But in here, we specifically did say chain link is prohibited. Um, except for construction sites. And then if you're going to use chain link on a construction site, you have to have the black fabric.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
I'm pretty sure that city center also does have some regulations regarding design review.
Yeah, I think when you get further into the design stuff, it has a, yeah.
Yeah. Because it's supposed to look pretty, right? Uh, so next article, the Article Nine, this is our special purpose zoning districts. That's also a new term for the city. This is kind of pulled from the comp plan, but it makes sense. It's for all those districts that are not a standard residential, commercial, industrial districts, your airport, your college, your hospital and your public district. So these are for very specific and special purposes and special purpose districts. Um, part of that, we had to move the transportation policies and practices out of Article Nine into Article Three, which is again, the administrative section. All of those articles, so everything airport was like Article Eleven, public district was kind of everywhere. College and hospital were also stuck at their places. So now they're all going to be in one place. Uh, we created minimum lot sizes for the college district and hospital district when they did not have any previously. We also reduced the front side and rear setbacks on the college district. This is mostly to accommodate a lot of the existing development and the patterns of development that we've been seeing there where the previous setbacks were more for R1 zone. It seemed to mimic those and that's not the type of development that's in the college district. Um, we also added setbacks for alleys. We did not have any previously. We also added a footnote for the FAA height requirements in the airport district. This is including signage, but also just general building. So that's important for all the FAA requirements there. We also added a footnote that non-residential structures next to residential zoning district or use would require a twenty-foot setback. Again, to make sure that you're not having too many non-compatible uses or maybe non-compatible uses that close to each other. Because again, these airport, college, hospital and even public uses do tend to have a mix of uses between residential and non-residential. Uh, we also noted that the density bonus is only permitted in college, hospital and public and that is again, because you cannot have any residential within the airport district. So then it would not be applicable there.
Joe, um, just for the record, I don't think you actually introduced yourself. I was probably through, sorry.
No problem. My name is Joe Dodson, Senior Planner here at the City of Caldwell.
Thank you.
Um, as far as the land uses, we did make restaurants permitted in the college and hospital district. This is kind of as Robin had said with the comp plan and everything else, to ensure we have some neighborhood commercial uses nearby. A little closer walking distance for people. Also made retail permit in airport because that happens in airport districts in a myriad of ways. I think there's already some out there, but technically not permitted. So just kind of makes it cleaner. Made primary and secondary schools prohibited in the airport district because they probably shouldn't be there. Uh, made mini storage facilities prohibited in the airport district as well. And we also made truck stops and SUP in the airport district and all, if not most of the land uses and the changes to the land use schedule for the airport, we did work with the airport manager to discuss those. Um, I know myself have met with him. I know Robin's met with him. We've gone through this more than once with him to make sure that there is an understanding and a the changes were made that he wanted to see for what the vision of the airport is ultimately. We also prohibited dormitories in the airport district, uh, made duplexes permitted in the hospital. There's already a lot in there for, if you actually go and drive around, you can, so it's just making things more compliant with existing development patterns. We made triplexes and fourplexes and SUP in the hospital district. This kind of goes back to some of what Robin had said regarding some of those homes used for survivors of different things. Those typically aren't just one unit, right? It's not a single-family home that does it. So this allows another avenue to get those other larger homes, you know, three, four plexes permitted within those zones. And similar to other zones, we made multifamily, that's seven or more, an SUP at council level within the public. Also within the public though, those are only going to be permitted if they're done in conjunction with the city. So it's not like a private developer cannot come in, zone public and then do a project. It has to be a partnership with the city on those. And you would see that in the table as a footnote. Also made single-family in townhomes prohibited in airport district. Because why? Uh, made single-family in townhomes permitted in hospital. Uh, made several industrial uses permitted or permitted with an SUP within airport. Um, a lot of those are already existing. So again, compatibility. Uh, we made hotels permitted in the airport because airport districts and airports often have some hotels nearby or right next to it. And we made RV parks transient permitted in the airport. Article Eleven is the overlay zoning districts. I'll start this and then probably hand it over to Robin because she knows much more about some of the design stuff. And what we went in there. Um, this was again, where we had, I believe the airport district was originally moved that obviously. And then reformat all the other existing overlays from various sections throughout the code and put them into here. Um, we did create main categories for the overlay districts and overlay zones. So there's like a I, well, I think we can see it here. So entertainment overlay, historic overlay, scenic corridor overlay, et cetera. So that was the main purpose there. Within the airport overlay, the APO one. The, we added hotels and motels to a land use with navigation agreement. So let me back up. This was what Robin had mentioned before. Some of these overlays, you have your standard zoning code. You may even have specific use provisions. Another layer of use provisions or use tables, uses that may or may not be permitted are the overlay districts. So you'd look at your regular land use schedule and see like, okay, this is permitted in the M1. Let me go over to the airport overlay. Is it actually permitted in the M1 by the airport? It may not be. And so that's where the overlay zoning districts allow the city another opportunity to better regulate things in very specific areas of the city. So that's why again, added hotels and motels to be a permitted land use within the, with an navigation agreement. Added RV parks with an navigation easement as well as church and personal support services. We removed the allowance for noise-sensitive additions and accessory uses to be permitted. And then we did not make any changes to the APO two. APO one is the closer to the airport zoning. APO two is that next step beyond. As noted, we created an entertainment overlay. This is specifically for the event center overlay and the event center district that we've established recently, past few months. Created the historic overlay districts. So we already have the Studenburgh historic overlay, but now we consolidated everything for Studenburgh as well as our downtown local and the North Caldwell Historic District into this section. Provided specific provisions in there. These are again, examples of where designer view would likely be required for these that will be in places not in the quote-unquote downtown core. Uh, we created scenic overlay districts specifically for the Indian Creek Corridor. Now the key gateways and and corridor overlays on the comp plan calls these out in some places or makes recommendations as to what, there will be more code amendments and future amendment packages that go even more detail about what these corridors are, like what roadways specifically we want to call these key corridors. So that we can, I guess, better regulate what goes along there. So it could be enhanced buffering, requiring a maximum setback for commercial uses, not having residential directly on the arterial, whatever it may be. I'm just throwing out thoughts that are coming to my head with that, but that would be the purpose. And then also the Boise River Corridor overlay, that is a somewhat new, but at the same time not. That was called out in the old comp plan too, but not really. Nothing was really done with it. The new comp plan does call that out even more. And there's an overall desire to have better connectivity from Indian Creek and our other pathways segments that we have to get to the Boise Corridor and create our own version of a green belt. Once we get development out there along the Boise Corridor. So that overlay was created for that. It also includes environmentally sensitive type of lands, you know, being in floodplain likely and repairing areas. That's part of that too. Specific to the Boise River. General floodplain overlay zone is also there and this is in myriad of places throughout the city. Obviously for all of our floodplain regulations that we have to abide by. We also created special development and urban design overlay districts. So this is taking that designer view another step and creating those specific overlay zones where they would be applicable. So you have the downtown, as we noted, is now city center and central business district. Uh, the UD two is the river district, which is between the river and Centennial and the river and Simplot. And then you have UD three, which is the neighborhood character urban design overlay, which is essentially the traditional neighborhood. So that so you have like your city center, downtown, and then one ring out further would be the UD three neighborhood character. Any questions on the overlays? Okay.
I just want to add one thing, Joe.
No worries.
Because we mentioned it the last time. I just want to clarify since the Commissioner Harmon wasn't here last time. So again, in these overlays, you're going to see a land use table that will show prohibited uses. Um, so even if you go to, and the reason for this is for instance, in our downtown area, we've expanded the downtown area across the railroad tracks. There's a lot of properties that are already zoned like industrial. But we don't want to see industrial in our downtown. But there was no way to say that in our M1 land use schedule. Because M1 is all over the city. So you create this overlay. So you say, okay, here's your land use table for an M1, but oh, I'm in this overlay. Oh. Well, even though it says I can, the overlay says if I'm in this, this particular area, I can't. for an M one, but oh, I'm in this overlay. Oh, well, even though it says I can, the overlay says if I'm in this, this particular area, I can't. So the overlay is more restrictive. So you'll see some tables in there where it will have specific uses um, that are going to be not allowed in these overlays. We did make some concessions in there for some existing industrial um, uses because we don't want to see them, you know, not be able to continue and be successful or whatever. So we've added some language in there that there may be some requirements for them to put up some fencing and landscaping and screening to beautify their properties, but any vacant um, industrial land would not be able to develop industrial in the downtown.
Thank you, Director Collins. So Article twelve, um, is a big article now. It uh, used to be the downtown article. All those got moved into the urban core as we noted, as well as mix of the overlay districts. Now Article twelve are our specific use provisions. That term is somewhat new again. We've had some of these throughout the code already, like mobile homes, manufactured homes, uh, within the downtown section. There was even specifics on restaurants, drive-throughs, other retail things, whatever it may be. All of those now got kind of moved into this. So that way there's one place to look for the specific uses and in the land use schedules, there's an asterisk on each one. And that notes that that's going to be or have specific use provisions. So hopefully it's easier for everybody that uses it, including staff to find the specific use provision and what the regulations are going to be. So this is a completely new process for the city of Caldwell. We did move again, all those other existing standards from various articles into this chapter or into this article and made modifications as needed. Some amendments to the accessory uses was done. So that used to be Article two, I believe we moved that all into this one. And this would be accessory uses and buildings. So ADU regulations also got moved into this. Specific to that, we are proposing to change the maximum size from seven hundred to nine hundred square feet. And from one bedroom to two bedroom or no more than seventy-five percent of the residential, the, the principal residence. Point of that is a lot of the aging in place, providing more housing diversity. Frankly, it can be used as a way for people who are on a fixed income. They have some way to already convert and detach garage, but they already have enough parking into an ADU. And then now they don't have to move. This is a story that we have heard quite a bit at the counter, honestly. Where we have our aging population who can't, they're now on a fixed income. They can't afford everything for the property. So they want to put an ADU in the back so that they can have some of their mortgage covered. Frankly, that's the way this goes. And that's something we're seeing more and more. You can ask any of the planning staff. This is something that has become extremely important and um, we, we take calls and in input from the public at the counter almost every single day regarding this. So this was a change that we found was hopefully very helpful and something that we really thought was important to add. Uh, we also added that ADUs in the historic district or one permitted, they were not previously. But say that they have to apply for the um, certificate appropriateness, just like you would in for any other type of thing. There's also other requirements in there that it has to match the design. Um, they would have to be detached only structure. So you can't do an addition to the historic home, which is similar to all the other historic district regulations. We also did check with the state historic district and asked them if they're okay with these types of things. And they said it was a great idea. They said that this is something that they are trying to push other jurisdictions to do in their historic districts. So that those districts and those areas that are typically more locked in on the size of a home and the number of dwelling units that those areas can also change and be malleable to meet the needs of the residents too. So we're, we're very proud of that. Some new specific use provisions that we added, uh, we added them for adult businesses. Arts, entertainment and recreation facilities, some automotive uses, assembly of persons, churches, et cetera. Um, drone delivery. Which is very new. That has some specifics in there too. Um, elevated pedestrian walkways, flex space, all of these things, mixed use developments. If you have any specific questions on those, I can definitely speak to what those may be. Um, also as noted, mobile food unit parks. Um, as an example, requiring that if you have a certain number of mobile food units that are going to be permanent. You have to have some seating area. You have to have a shade structure. You have to have bathrooms within a certain distance. Those types of things just to make it a little bit more permanent. I don't know if you guys are well-traveled. I'm assuming you are, but um, my wife and I visited Austin. I guess that's the food capital or the food truck capital of the United States. Didn't know that. That's what they claim, you know, everybody claims these things, but you could walk down any block nearly in Austin and they have these permanent food truck parks where it's like six of these just around an asphalt pad and you have six different types of food to get, but it's permanent and these businesses are booming. I mean, and it's a great incubator for these small businesses that can't afford the brick and mortar restaurant. But they still make a banging burger. So those types of things that we're just trying to to have regulations for because we're getting asked. So that's what a lot of these specific use provisions are for. Also added modular buildings. These are somewhat related to like tiny homes, those types of things, but it could be a myriad of uses. Um, schools, shooting ranges, we were actually pretty silent on, on what those requirements would or would not be and that seems inappropriate. So we added some provisions for that. So those tobacco and vape shops, uh, for that, that's similar to other quote unquote noxious uses that you don't want in specific areas. So like not within three hundred feet of a church. Or daycare, things like that. And that's not just Caldwell. That's specific to almost every jurisdiction has that type of regulation. As far as Article twelve, any specific questions on that from the commission?
I do real quick.
Yes, sir.
Um, oh, sorry.
Yes.
Um, just to go back on the ADU and the historic district. And you said it, I think, and I just wanted to clarify the ADU would have to mimic the look of that historic.
Yes, sir.
Building, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Absolutely. And we would check that through that certificate of appropriateness, just like if they were going to do a, replace the siding or whatever it was on the building. So. Okay. Article thirteen. I don't honestly know what it is currently. I think it I don't remember what it is. But now it's going to be PUDs. Where PUDs currently are in Article three. I don't know what's in Article thirteen now. It might actually be a blank article. Um, but we're moving the PUD stuff into this PUD, just for the record, planned unit development. We moved all of the provisions into this article. Um, we also deleted the ability to have prohibited uses as part of a PUD that was previously in there that said no more than thirty percent of the site could be, or the PUD can include prohibited or especially permitted. We took out the ability to have prohibited uses. And we added in a minimum requirement, uh, if you're going to have residential uses, they have to have minimum three instead of just two. And that would be like duplexes versus single family versus single family attached versus multifamily, right? Yeah. You gotta be able to have multiple uses. It's a purpose typically of a beauty, a master planned development. Um, we also deleted language regarding the ability to reduce the number of required amenities. So this is kind of where people were using the PUD to get out of PUD requirements type of stuff. We button up that language to make it much more clear that you're not going to be permitted to do those types of things. Also added language that if they are requesting deviations from the code, that they have to provide additional amenities above and beyond what is already noted. We had a language that requests for deviations cannot include an increase into the max density. So current PUD standards and the old comp plan, that's how you got your density increase. So like R one low density. Max F three, but then with a PUD, you go to six units per acre, just automatically once you do a PUD. Now that's not how it's going to be. Now any density bonus beyond what is noted in the comp plan has to go through the density bonus program, which I will get into. Those frankly, I think objectively are more strict requirements than simply submitting a beauty. So, and that was the purpose. It's feedback from the public, feedback from council and just our professional opinions. So hopefully that's a good change. We also revised, uh, essentially the definition of infill. Not just in PUDs, but in general from twenty acres to five acres. So this is more, um, Robin really touched well on this during the workshop, but synopsis is twenty acres, you should still be able to do everything that code says. That's typically a large enough site where you're not going to have encumbrances through it unless you have a giant canal or something that cuts through the site at a diagonal. Maybe something could go wrong. But five acres is much more appropriate. Five acres and below, that's typical infill site. Where you're going to run into issues if you want, and then to do the project that you may do. And this is specific to a lot of these just random pockets of areas where you have these small five acre, three acre parcels left. Everything's developed around them. This is a three and a half acre site. They just can't meet those requirements. Infill now allows them to have a little bit leniency on what those may be. And then therefore we can get that redeveloped. We can get the sidewalk gap filled now because now they're going to actually redevelop. So there's a purpose for that. Any questions, comments on the PUD stuff? Okay. So before I get into the detailed, detailed changes for a few articles, um, after the workshop, there were changes made. Um, as Robin mentioned, made modifications to the definitions. We also made some other textual changes for clarification as we were talking about like within the enforcement and authority sections of different articles, just to button those up, make it more clear. Uh, we also, as we were doing that, caught some other grammatical or unintended errors throughout, like for example, allowing duplexes and R three, but not triplexes. That doesn't make sense. Why would you let, allow a less intense residential use in a zone that anticipates a higher intensity? So we just corrected those things. Um, within the RS one, RS two, this was something that Commissioner Bootros called out specifically regarding some of the conservation area development and some of the language. This is the proposed changes that we made. So that way it just makes it simpler and easier for applicants to utilize this. And long story short, with the conservation area development, this is only permitted as the quote unquote density bonus from two units per acre to three units per acre in the RS one, RS two zones in the green, the dark green area on the future land use map in the comp plan. So again, I just said like seven layers. I'm sorry. That is just for that. So it's saying you can put forty percent, you have to put forty percent minimum of your property of the land of your project into a conservation area. Can't develop, period. Now the rest of it, you get to use that three units per acre for that. So you end up going from two units per acre on a forty acre site, for example, would be eighty units. The math then works out to be if you go to three units per acre, now you get a hundred and twenty versus the eighty. And then that would be on the remaining acreage of the property. So this language was in there. We've had multiple people come in, um, developers, even landowners say like, hey, the way you had it written. I probably won't be able to meet it. And so now you've just kind of made my property non-buildable or very, very difficult to build. So feedback from that, feedback from commission, we are proposing these changes. Yes, I have any questions on this because this was very specific language. So I just wanted to make sure. Okay. So the in detail stuff. The parking regulations. One you'll notice on the slides, I input the article because I remember last time you guys were immediately like, wait, where did we go? And I understand, uh, parking regulations currently and remaining in ten oh two oh five. The main changes, the big ones, we updated the minimum driveway space and subsequent garage setback uh, from twenty feet to twenty-five feet. So it's ten by twenty-five for each space. Current is essentially eight feet wide by twenty feet long. So this is an increase. Um, this matches the garage setback as noted, and this is to address the consistent issue of vehicles overhanging sidewalks. So one, the changing where the setback is measured from will affect this in a positive way as well as increasing that garage setback. And by that, the property line is typically the right of way line, which is usually depending on where you're at, could be one to three feet behind the sidewalk. We were allowing the setback to be measured at the back of sidewalk. Well, now you've already technically you're eating into that three feet of right of way. It just changed. So now with the new setback and the new measurement, we should have a lot less complaints and issues with cars, vehicles, trucks overhanging the sidewalks. Um, with the EV parking, uh, we modified that to say you have to do five percent. Once you're over twenty-five spaces. And the five percent is in addition to whatever that number is. So if you hit twenty-five spaces, you need to do five percent above that. So whatever five percent of twenty-five, which is like one, I'm assuming give or take. Hundred works better. Hundred and five would be the total number. Um, current code is you don't even have to do EV parking until you hit a hundred spaces. Um, and it was only for non-residential. We changed it to non-residential and multifamily. Because if you're going to park your car, it won't just be at the commercial place. It's probably going to also be by your house or your residence. So that's why we included that. And then part of this at fires request, we require that the EV spaces are, should be at least fifty feet away from any combustible structure. And that would include even a carport. So, but the main would be the, the actual building. And that's because fire, as we've seen throughout the country. When a lithium battery goes up, there's a lot different kind of fire response needed than just a car fire. So that's why we included that. We also cleaned up the table that lists the required number of off-street spaces. This kind of goes back to the changes we made to the land use schedule that have these separate categories, like commercial automotive, commercial retail. Industrial manufacturing, industrial storage, like all of those. And then your alphabetical in each of them. Well, the parking was the same way. And it was very difficult to find which category things were in. And then the general category would have a minimum parking sometimes, but then you'd never be able to find your specific use in there. And so you're like, I don't really know what my parking requirement is. And this was even issues that staff has. I can't tell you how many times with Sarah, with Jen, with Jelly, with all the planners, we're trying to figure out what the parking requirement is for something. And it should just be a lot simpler. So we made changes in order to just as much as we can keep it general, all non-residential is one per five hundred square feet. All industrial is one per two thousand. Both of those are consistent with industry standards throughout the valley. And allows the applicants, the developers, the users to do more if they need to, and that's totally fine. Um, the specifics for the residential did change though. So single family is still two per unit as we've noted. But then multifamily was updated to be based off of bedroom. So I believe current code was something like one and a half or two per unit, just straight across the board. Now it's going to be per bedroom. So studio is one space per studio. One and two bedroom is one and a half spaces for one and two bedrooms. And it's two spaces per unit for every three bedroom and up. And in addition to all of that, you have to have ten percent is guest parking. So one for every ten spaces has to have a guest space. So even if you only have ten units, you need to have one guest parking. So that's where that comes in. And when you do the math, every project's a little different because every project tends to have a different mix of bedrooms, right? But when I did the math, it was approximately seventeen to twenty-five percent additional parking for multifamily projects than what current code is. So overall, as the direction that we've gotten from, you know, residents and especially council and commission. That you guys wanted to see a little more parking for these. This should help accommodate that and alleviate some of those parking issues and spillage out onto streetways. Any questions on the parking regulation changes? Commissioner Booters.
Commissioner Booters.
Um, are you going to discuss the credit for parking spaces in developments later?
Credit?
Uh, when you talk about the allowance of parking spaces, counting them in the garage, we had that discussion.
We did have that discussion. Um, we can have that discussion again, but it, nothing in the code is changing regarding that other than just you just have to have.
The place to discuss that? Or you have a different section?
No, this would be the place. So if you guys want, or if you want to make a motion at the end, that changes, like you recommend.
I'll, I'll save it to the end.
Okay. Next one is landscaping and buffering. I don't know why I missed an entire screen there. It's ten oh two oh nine. So again, it was Article seven and then the tree was Article, uh, eight. Those both got moved into this article, Article two, because it's applicable to all zoning districts. We um, added provisions within the applicability section to be triggered when addition exceeds twenty-five percent of the existing structure or is a thousand square feet. So as I noted before, this would be for some of the other areas or projects that we weren't able to get like a street buffer on a house that just keeps getting changes or even a business, frankly, that kept having changes, but wasn't a change of use. And we couldn't have a trigger point to say, hey, you really need to put in your buffer now. So that's what this is, the purpose of that was for. Uh, also permitting smaller projects. So those projects that are less than two acres to have landscape plans drawn up by someone other than a licensed landscape architect. This is more of a monetary impact to the people who have smaller projects. It's just not necessary. An architect or whomever they have to have draw up the plans for the building permit are going to be. are gonna be plenty sufficient for us to be shown and review the appropriate landscaping on that property. Because it's a smaller project. Um, a big change is a modification to the minimum planting requirements. So first one is seventy five percent of the trees and shrubs have to be low or moderate water usage. This will be checked through the Treasure Valley Tree Selection Guide. That we can, anybody can find it online. We have it saved for us. I think we even have hard copies. Have beautiful images of trees. And you, it, each one has uh what zone, like, that's not applicable, I guess. They have, you know, like the harshness zones throughout the country, whatever. So it's like what zones they're applicable to. Their water usage, how big they get, height and width, et cetera. So it's a really good document. So we would use that to check that these trees are lower moderate water usage. Also change the ground cover requirement. Uh, current ground cover requirement says a minimum of seventy percent grass. We're changing that to be minimum twenty percent, but a maximum of fifty. And this is again to help get ahead of any potential water issues in a sense, you know, we'd like to be a little proactive on that if we don't need it. And you can have a buffer that looks as beautiful with some extra shrubs that take less watering than just watering grass. As we know, grass is the most intensive use of water when you're watering. And then you tend to overwater the area and have a bunch of overspray that you're just watering the sidewalk. And that's the type of thing we want to avoid. We also changed the size of the shrubs at planting and how we measure that. So currently it's says minimum two gallon. When we go out and do landscape inspections, it's already planted. I have no idea what size that plant was, what pot it was. And so we, I talked to a couple of different landscape architects and they said, well, you could use the spread better. And I was like, the spread, what are you talking about? And they're like, well, how big is the actual plant when it's planted? But what's the spread of the shrub? And I was like, oh, that's interesting because obviously you could, they were saying, there's regular nurseries throughout the country that say like, oh yeah, it's a five gallon pot. But the shrub is this big. And it's like, well, you just put a little infant shrub in a big pot. Now you can sell it for more or whatever it may be, or to meet the code requirement of that jurisdiction nearby. The spread changes that to where now we can say, hey, you can't have these little dinky plants. The point is to have a more robust and beautiful buffer at the time of planting, not just, hey, yeah, it'll grow into itself in two years. So this allows us to check that better. And get better buffers hopefully on the front end versus two, three years down the line. I also created variation of shrub density, but depending on the type of landscaping. So like one per seven linear feet, one per, I think it even goes through seven, six, five, and like a land use buffer requires one per every four linear feet. The point of that is to have more shrubs in those buffers that we want more coverage and more buffering frankly. We also updated the minimum qualified open space for subdivisions and by reducing the number of categories. So we simplified the table. I've proposed that to you guys multiple times now. Um, and then requiring, a new thing is requiring one tree per five thousand square feet of general open space. So if you have a subdivision, you have a twenty thousand square foot open space lot, they need to have four trees. There currently isn't a requirement for that. So it's just kind of creating a minimum requirement. A lot of developers and, and home builders do that anyways. It's, it's not an issue necessarily. It's just something to say, for the unfortunate ones that don't want to, we're saying, hey, at least do these. Uh, also requiring that the main open space to be constructed within the first two phases. This is something that has come up in multiple different projects where you have eight phases in a project and the main open space is left until the end or near the end. And then maybe they expire or they don't finish. And there's just a lot of issues. So we're trying to get ahead of that and say, hey, you have to do with your phasing plan, however you wanna design this, you gotta figure it out, but you gotta have it within the first two phases. And that would be the main open space area and amenities. So if you have a large open space area with a clubhouse and pool, you gotta get all of that done in those first two phases. Now we also increased the minimum qualified open space area for P U Ds from ten percent to fifteen percent. This is the only part of the landscaping code that specifically calls out the P U D code versus that requirement being in the P U D code. I don't, just is the way it is. Because again, P U Ds can be in any zone. So that's why it's in this article. But current code is only ten percent, which is the same as having a subdivision that has an average lot size of less than six thousand square feet. While P U D again, you're asking for deviations from things. You're asking to get things from the city. We want something in return. We up that minimum to, to fifteen percent. So that way, at least on the open space side, we're getting a higher threshold and value out of the P U D. We also updated what areas are qualifying. So currently, no irrigation facility, not even the canals, and no street buffers can count at all towards the minimum open space. That has been impactful to a lot of developers. Um, which frankly, when you don't allow some of those areas to count, and then we've had lower open space requirements, now we are increasing the open space generally, the minimum, but relying some more areas to count. So fifty percent of the street buffers along collectors and arterials can count. So if they have a twenty five foot buffer by whatever linear feet, half of that can count towards the qualified because people are gonna walk, right? It's still open space. They're still required to put it in, trying to give them a little credit for that. And then as well as allowing subterranean stormwater facilities. So those are those seepage beds that are just grass. Nobody knows the difference. Residents usually don't even know that they're there. Those used to not be able to count. Well, that's still a grassy area that can be used. It should count. So we're proposing that to count. That um should be very impactful to a lot of developments and allow more areas to be better utilized frankly. We also simplified the street buffer table. So it used to separate like minor and major collectors, minor and major arterials. We just said collector arterials, done with it. And making them a specific width. Generally, collectors are twenty feet, arterials twenty five, and then the highway is thirty five. So those kind of, other than arterials, those all went up about five feet. So we are requiring more now than what we were to. So again, as we were going through this, we wanted to require more open space, more landscaping. We were trying to also give credit for that to the developers and home builders that have to then do that. And frankly, the homeowners that are gonna have to pay the H O A fees later on to maintain all of that. We also added a requirement for additional landscape amenities within the corridor. So that's some of the corridors that were noted in the complaint that we already talked about. But those would be areas where you don't just want grass shrub trees, where you, you want some dry creeks, you want boulders, you want maybe some undulating berms, you want different kinds of shrubs. Uh, you want benches kind of tucked in there or other things like that, just to give some of these key corridors more visual interest as you're driving and walking. Um, we overhauled the land use buffer section. So the current list, if you guys have ever read that section is one, it's literally hard to read because it's just a list of uses and there's categories in there, but it gets lost in the list. And then again, it's not an exhaustive list, so it's hard to understand which use is where and what category or class. And so we just tried to simplify that and, and into this way. So for all commercial uses adjacent to residential, you have to have a twenty foot buffer, period, end of story. For industrial uses adjacent to residential, you have a thirty foot. If it's industrial adjacent to commercial, which is still typically less intense, you have a twenty foot buffer. For the special, special purpose zones that again allow a myriad of different uses, you're gonna have ten foot minimum if it's any adjacent to any residential. And then urban core will have to be based off of the use. So because those are completely mixed use districts. If you have a retail store next to a duplex, then the retail store is supposed to put in that twenty foot buffer because they're a commercial use. Uh, but if you have like Dairy Gold, if they do another expansion or something like that nearby one of the restaurants, they're supposed to put in their twenty foot buffer. Or if it was a residence, then it's a thirty foot buffer because that's an industrial use. So in the urban core, it's gonna have to be case by case. Um, I tried many ways to write where I could put a number in, but it just was too difficult. Um, and then for residential uses, there are no buffers except for the multifamily, which has its own section. Um, and I'll get into that shortly. We also renamed pathways. So current is micro, major and public pathways. We changed that from two neighborhood, community and regional respectively. It's part of that is where they're located within a subdivision, but then also the width of the pathway. Micro pathways are typically five feet. The community pathways could be eight to ten, and then the regional should always be ten feet. And that is again, also where they're at. Micro pathways would be interconnectivity between like uh open space areas within a subdivision. The community pathway would be going from those internal areas in a subdivision to the exterior arterial or collector pathways or a regional pathway along a canal. And then those regional pathways that obviously take you throughout the region and connect. And the purpose of the regional would be multi-use. That's why they're ten feet. So you could have bikes and pedestrians on the same pathway. Also clarified tree requirements along pathways. It mentions a requirement of trees, but didn't tell you how many. So we just clarified that. We also created perimeter parking lot and building facade landscaping that was not in the code previously. You could have your parking asphalt go right up to the property line. And again, when you have zones that are mixed and or a industrial zone that happens to be next to a residential zone, you start running into issues. And then there's also water, stormwater runoff and things like that that are now gonna be on somebody else's property if they don't do it right. So we just required a minimum five foot parking lot landscape buffer just around the perimeter, just to give it a little more visual interest, a little buffering, et cetera. And then also along the building, have a minimum three foot wide little buffer, or I should say planters around the building. Again, that's visual interest, some pedestrian elements, things like that. Also created a new water wise landscaping section. Current code has one little paragraph about dry landscaping and it's only permitted in M one and M two, I believe, or maybe I P as well. This new water wise landscaping section has a little bit more robust language to it and allows it in more areas in specific instances. So again, that would be instead of grass, you could replace that with two different types of rock and boulders. Um, but you're gonna have to still keep your trees, but then maybe add in a dry creek, something a little more robust in the sense of visual because you're not putting the grass in. And this would be for some of the areas that can't get irrigation, don't have it. Or are in an area where it's tucked away in an industrial park. What's the necessary purpose for this buffer? If it's already adjacent to other industrial, what's the purpose of grass? It's just kind of a waste and a pool on the overall water system anyways. Let's just do gravel. So trying to offer additional solutions for landscaping. Any questions on this section? Next one be multifamily development. I've discussed this with you guys multiple times. Um, this is the current article is article fourteen or yeah, ten fourteen. Right now it's only internal circulation. Now this proposes also site development standards, minimum open space, um also building design standards. Uh, we are including a minimum buffer and setback in here at the direction of council. Uh, so multifamily residential buildings shall provide a minimum setback along the perimeter of at least fifteen feet, period, unless a greater setback is required somewhere else in the code. Um, if they, well, within the development, they have to be separated at least ten feet. That's more of a fire code thing. And it helps break up some of the massing of the bigger buildings anyways, if you at least have a ten foot gap. Now, when a new multifamily building is proposed adjacent to existing single family, though, there is a larger setback. And that would be a twenty five foot setback. And that is again, to pull that away a little bit further from existing residential, whether it's two story, three story, five story, whatever it may be, back it up a little bit, provide a land use buffer. That's the section of landscaping that they have to do, which is the most dense landscaping. And just give a little bit buffer there. The exception to that would be if you do have multifamily that is single story. Well, single story to single families typically seen as okay. So you don't have to do the twenty five foot, you just have to do the fifteen foot. Or if it is within the city center and central business district, this is a whole different ballgame here. So in some sites, many sites, if you have to do a twenty five foot buffer, you can't build on the project because that might be half the property honestly. So that's why central business district and city center is gonna have to have its own regulations, which it does within the urban core district article. Um, in addition, when a new multifamily building is across from a public roadway, the minimum fifteen foot buffer shall be maintained. So as an example, if it is along a local street, the street buffer for a local street, it's only ten foot. This is saying you're gonna have to do the fifteen, not the ten. So the more restrictive buffer. But then if it's along a collector or an arterial, it's gonna be more than fifteen anyways. So then obviously you'll do the bigger buffer. And that's just all that is saying. And then again, those setbacks have to be landscaped per the buffer section of code. It's not different. It's just those land use buffer section, which again is the more robust buffering section. As an example of the old code or current code or lack thereof, and then the new code, this is an example, this is a local street that you have apartments butting up against, technically meet our setback and landscape buffer requirements now. Generally speaking, this is what it could look like. We have more tree requirement than what current code is, as well as a lot more shrub density requirement. And this is, it doesn't look like it as much here, but it would be pushed back an additional five feet from what it is now. And of course, when you put it in the artwork, you make the trees a little older too. So again, side by side, very different. It's about twice the number of trees and vastly more shrubs. Writing the open space for multifamily, requiring minimum ten percent overall, period, no matter what. That's what you're gonna do. Yeah. So um, once you get over five acres, you have or fifty units, I believe, um, you have to do ten percent plus a per unit. And that again, just helps you scale the minimum open space as the projects get larger. Because if you did ten percent across the board, you can get four hundred units and two hundred units on the same site, depending how you do it. And then if you only do ten percent open space, that's not scalable. That's not fair to those residents. Because now you have twice the number of residents, give or take, obviously. Using the same amount of open space? No, no, no. You have more units, you're gonna do more open space. So that's what that purpose is for. Uh, and then for, for private open space, we required uh minimum sixty square foot. So that's just requiring the patios, requiring the balconies, those types of things where if you don't have or want to use the common open space, you at least have your little patio. Uh, again, requiring projects that are five acres or fifty units or more to require a um minimum ten thousand square foot area of open space. This was discussed at the workshop. This is saying of your overall required open space, whether it's the ten percent of the per unit, one of those areas has to be ten thousand square foot in size. Once you get to this size of a project. And the purpose of that is even if you only have fifty units, whatever it may be, you gotta find a way to give both the adults and the kids frankly, some larger open area to play, not just count your remnant pieces or even your buffering. You can't use that as much to kick a ball, throw a baseball or whatever, because it's gonna have shrubs, it's gonna have trees, those types of things. So this is just a requirement to say, hey, you need to have a play area, an open play area. We also provided a better and broader list of example amenities. There was a very short list before, so this is just an ability for um applicants as well as residents to understand what the expectation is on the type of amenities that we wanna see. And then requiring minimum architectural design standards. So that would be specific to this. It's hard to see some of the numbers as you can tell, but each of them correlate to like different materials, an accent versus uh a primary material as well as colors, having varying roof profiles, also wall modulation. In this example, um, the same as the not so good looking example, would say that if you have those vertical style units where you can clearly see like that's unit A, that's unit B, that's unit C, that those are not allowed to be on the same wall plane. You gotta pop them out. You gotta have some wall modulation. I mean, I think everybody can agree when you're walking down something like that and you see just this whole wall, even if you have windows, it still looks very boring, very plain. This would allow you and require them to have some modulation there, just break up the visual massing. Okay, one more after this, I promise. Any questions on the multifamily? Okay. So completely new, courtesy of recommendations from the comp plan and replacing the existing P U D density bonus quote unquote, is the new density bonus program in ten oh three, so article three dash eighteen. It's as Robin said, very important note, it is not permitted in the R one zone. Generally, the purpose of this is to implement the recommendations and goals of the comp plan. Um, and it creates an optional, not required, an optional incentive program with consistent criteria and standards to get some additional housing density to support housing diversity, affordability and other desirable services and or amenities within our community. Some of the minimum criteria, or I should say the things that would get you your points are noted here. So deed restricted units, agent placed units requiring housing diversity or dedication of land. I'll give you some specifics. Would be well, first, the point system that we created. I'll, I'll go forward and then backwards. So we created a point system into five categories, a half point, one, two, three and four point. Those are correlated to percentages. Four point being a hundred percent of the density bonus that's noted in the comp plan as well as in this article. Three points would be seventy five percent, et cetera, right? Except for the half a point, some of them are only, the density bonus is only four units per acre additional, while a half a point. Except for the half a point, some of them are only, the density bonus is only four units per acre additional, while a half a point typically won't utilize a half a dwelling unit per acre. You could technically. But in those cases where I think it's in like two categories, you just were saying that the half point gets you the, the one point, the whatever it may be. So that should be much easier to calculate as well as implement as we go through the process. But specific to the point system, there are not many proposed criteria that get you that full one hundred percent. So there's very few one singular thing that you can do to get the full density bonus. I know that that was something, staff knows that that was something that was a concern of council and the public about, hey, are you kinda like the old, the current PUD where you just, you submit this one thing and now you get the full thing like, well, we wanted to avoid that. So as an example of those types of things, which to commissioners and more as point last time, I believe is correct, it's a high bar would be all rental units deed restricted for making fifty percent of AMI or less. Or if they're for sale units, all of the units or lots deed restricted for everybody making a hundred and twenty percent of the AMI or less. Um, if you guys aren't familiar, typically with rentals versus for sale, there is a big difference in what the AMI typically is for those. And so that's why most AMI, if you're ever see deed restriction on for sale lots, it's gonna be that hundred and twenty percent or or less type of thing. It won't be at the hundred. Some places will, obviously, if you can, but typically developers and home builders can't make that happen at all. So that's why you have to say a hundred and twenty percent because they can't even find the people that will be financed to get the hundred percent. So that's where that comes in. Another example that would get the full bonus would be a dedication of land to the city, large enough to construct a fire or police station. So that's something that in general, the city has needed or wanted. So if you can do that, then you can get that. Other ones would be like, uh, a three point one would be dedication of land and construction, not just dedicate, but also constructing a public park that's twenty acres or more. Um, within the mixed use place type, you could do dedication of land to construct a fire station or police station. Um, some of the half point ones, if they're doing housing, just a regular subdivision, if you have at least two types of housing, then you can get that half point. Um, let me see. Another one with housing diversity that we've proposed, which we think could help in a lot of ways that we discussed with the ADUs is saying that if you have a certain percentage of the homes outright at the beginning constructed with an ADU already, you can get a density bonus for that. So we're hoping that the point system is both attainable, but also not so easily attainable. Like it, they need to have criteria that one is very clear. Everybody understands what they are. As well as understanding that we not sell on the farm just because you do one thing, at least unless it's a really, really, really big thing. In regards to the density bonus program, we are absolutely open and willing to hearing your guys' feedback because it is so new. Um, in general, that is the code updates for round two of mini. So if you guys have additional comments or questions, please feel free to ask.
Thanks, Joe. Just one question. I think I understand. I'm seeing it here in the footnote. So, um, I, I gonna dedicate land to construct a, a fire station, but it's near another existing fire station. The footnote must be approved by the appropriate city official. So if it's not approved, then they would not necess, they would not qualify for those respective points.
Correct, correct. Yeah, that's why we put that in there because exactly to your example. That's a great example.
Other questions right now for staff? And for, uh, and we do have, um, public, um, testimony being, um, someone signed up, but just note for those that are observing, we did have a four hour workshop where we went very in depth in this. So I, although this is a lot and we are still at an hour and a half, um, we have as a commission uh, spent a great deal of time looking at this, um, and asking lots of questions of staff.
Absolutely, you have.
All right. So with that, move on to our public hearing. Um, we have no one signed up in favor, no one signed up in neutral. I have, um, is it ver, uh, for, uh, I'm trying, I'll have you come on up and state your name and address into the record.
Hello, uh, my name is Virgil Abraham Larry. And I live, uh, on one, one, zero, nine, eight West Abraham Drive in Boise. Uh, so I'm here today, um, because the new zoning ordinance, um, does not reflect the nature um, of the properties next to the freeway, um, when it comes to, um, urban neighborhood com plan. So, um, I have a property on three hundred Frontis Road, which is part of urban neighborhood and which is includes traditional neighborhood and C1 zoning. And my property sits next to the freeway TY eighty-four and the proposed land use for zoning traditional neighborhood and C1 does not have a proper commercial land use for this type of properties, which are more freeway commercial oriented. The, the location of these properties puts them in a disadvantage for most land uses proposed in the TN and C1. For example, my property was a daycare and it went out of business when the freeway expanded. When it comes to things like that, schools, uh, daycares, offices, it's not proper use next to the freeway with all the noise that's in there. So, um, so I'm here today specifically because, um, I've been trying and I would like to run a used car lot on my property. And the proposed zoning ordinance has removed completely the automotive use. And I agree for, um, uses like the automotive repair or the body shops, which they're they're not a good way to clean the area and we all know that the area looks pretty bad. But automotive sale is ideal for this property. It, it's right next to the freeway and, uh, is very close to the two exit, exit twenty-seven and twenty-eight. And it does not nega negatively impact the neighborhood. So, uh, my suggestion is that the zoning to include a small scale car sale for UD three, which currently is also is in the overlays prohibited for maybe up to like twenty, twenty-five cars. Um, for the properties that are directly exposed to the freeway. Because if we see there is probably maybe like close to a dozen of properties that are next to freeway, they are, they are not being developed. And the reason behind that is because of the nature of these properties. They're so close to the freeway. And what I understand the zoning staff is trying to make this area mostly like a neighborhood oriented, but these properties, they don't fall in that category. These properties should be more towards, um, freeway commercial. So I currently have, uh, automotive repair building permit in place.
If you, I'll give you twenty more seconds to wrap up your comments.
Thank you. And but I know that's not the right thing to do because my property sits next to the park. And before I start building my automotive repair, please, I ask you to consider my request to add like a section for small scale, uh, auto sales in this owning.
Thank you.
Can I, can I just add one more thing?
One more thing.
Um, so also it was mentioned, because I wasn't prepared for the, but it was mentioned that the, uh, setbacks are gonna increase on traditional neighborhood. Well, this, these properties are already too small. Increasing the setback is gonna make me impossible to develop. That's all my feedback.
Any questions from commissioners? Commissioner Butros?
Have you already met with the planning and zoning staff on this issue?
Yes, I've been begging for four years for this issue.
Cause I believe in the past you've had, uh, probably special use permit requests come before.
I, I requested, the thing is that I was misled into the type of application. I was, uh, suggested to do like an, uh, amendment, uh, ordinance amendment. And then when the time came for that meeting, um, the zone, the zoning staff, the previous zoning staff said that better chances are to actually rezon during the city council meeting. And then when I followed up with them to rezon, they denied me. And then later on I was asked is if I plan on selling my property because the city is interested on it. And I gave the city twice the chance to buy it. I thought and compared to all the prices in the neigh, in the, in the area, I thought I was very fair with the price, but the city wasn't interested. They wanted just for the value of the land, which I don't have only the land and I have the building too. So before I start building a shop there, which is I went through the neighborhood door to door, I talked to the neighbors and I, I told them what's going on. I have the permit for the shop, but I would like I would rather have fifteen cars, twenty cars in the parking lot for sale than actually building a shop, a repair, uh, auto repair shop in there.
Thank you.
And everybody agreed.
Thank you. Other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, so that was the only individual signed up for public testimony. So let's see. Final questions, um, for commissioners, uh, by commissioners for staff. Commissioner Butros?
I, I think I'd like to leave that door open, uh, as we caucus.
Sure.
I, I think it's likely that we're gonna end up shunting some questions to staff.
Okay. All right. So with that, um, it's not on here because it is a legislative matter to be closed the public hearing. So I would entertain a motion to move the, uh, to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Commissioner Butros? A second for, uh, Commissioner Whitbeck. Uh, all of the favor?
Aye.
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 Any, any opposed? All right. So now it's time for us as a commission to deliberate and additionally, uh, staff is still available during this time to answer, um, questions.
So if, 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 if nobody else minds, um, as I, as, as I went through this package multiple times, I was struck that there are two, uh, basic breakouts of the code. One of them is code that establishes a future vision for the city of Caldwell. And the other is more conventional regulations that, that you've gone into extensively. And as I was looking at the code that establishes a vision, I thought, is that really within the scope of the planning and zoning commission for, there, there were a couple of problems that, that with me making a decision on the code that establishes the future vision. Well, a, as everyone will readily agree, it's the primary responsibility of the city council. They're the ones who are accountable to the voters. They're the ones who are gonna be held responsible for how the, that vision is implemented. The other part of the code is all, I think, very straightforward and I have no problem recommending ninety percent of this code, but I'm uncomfortable voting on code that I think is, is not within my scope and for which I don't believe I have enough information to make an informed decision. If your commissioners may remember, when we were reviewing the comprehensive plan, I asked for a deep dive. And these are those specific sections where I felt like I didn't understand it. I needed a better understanding. Uh, Joe, uh, two weeks ago, when we had the workshop and you saw that I was struggling with how some of the land use tables are constructed, the lot sizes, the allowances and so on, and how all of these overlapping effects are gonna end up looking in an approved development. And because of that, I felt like I really don't have enough information to vote on these, on those, a very limited set of paragraphs. Um, if, and, and Sarah, you don't have to, I'll, I'll give these to you later. So there are what, um, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten paragraphs. And some of these are tables that I looked at them and I thought, I really don't feel competent to vote on these. I, I think most of this is worthy of recommending for approval, but I'm, I'm struggling with these. And then there were two additional sections that we had talked about at the comprehensive, excuse me, at the workshop, um, and the decision was made not to include those here. And I'd like to at least bring those topics up so that they get highlighted for city council. Again, this is, all of this material is stuff that if the city council enters into it knowingly, is that, that's it. There, it's their responsibility and I don't feel like I'm gonna throw a barrier in front of them. In essence, I wanna call these things to their attention. They may look at it and go, yeah, we thought about that. We're fine with that. And then, okay, there. That's that.
Okay.
Um, let me read off just the section titles or the numbers. So it's ten oh one oh two dash three, ten oh one dash three, ten oh three dash eighteen, ten oh five oh two, ten oh five oh four, ten oh five oh five, ten oh six oh five, ten oh eight oh two, sub paragraph one, ten oh eight oh five and ten dash twelve oh three dash one. So those are, those are the paragraphs that establish the future vision. So if city council is comfortable approving those, that's their business. Um, the two additional bits were ten oh one dash ten, definition seven. And, and so, so commissioners, it, it's the section that deals with the administrative decision. And the director has this power to make a couple of different calls on administrative decisions. Uh, they can either, uh, be approved without a review or they can be referred to different, different entities for review. And that's a very powerful role and it's cool that the director has that, but it, this paragraph also allows the use of a designee. And I thought, if, if you retain accountability by constraining the scope of that role to the director only and that they cannot delegate that role, then you retain that accountability path. Um, so I, that was a recommendation that I had, uh, it, and the director gave an articulate response to that two weeks ago. Well, let me read this other bit and then, and then if, if you will. Um, then the topic I brought up earlier of an hour ago, um, was this garage parking space requirement. The, the code as written in ten oh two oh five, paragraph two B says the, uh, that the, the paragraph directs the parking space requirements to include parking spaces in a garage towards the minimum parking space requirements. And I disagreed with that requirement. We had a good discussion. And the discussion at the February twenty-sixth workshop included alley loaded homes where the only available parking is in the garage. Um, and it's like, oh, okay. So the issue is not as clear cut. Sometimes you may find that you have to take credit for the space in a garage, but even then, uh, because that space is under control of the homeowner and a lot of homeowners use that interior space for something other than putting a car, even if that means they have to park the car a block away because they wanna have something else going in that garage. Is, is, is that under their control? Is it appropriate to have that, uh, parking space count towards the minimum parking space requirements in that development? So, uh, director, I, oh, excuse me, director, I, I invite you to respond.
Um, I guess I'll just start off by responding to a couple of things. Um, you absolutely have the authority and the purview to make a recommendation on the vision because the state statute actually says that the city is required to adopt a comprehensive plan and that that has the vision for the community and that then the zoning codes are created to be able to implement that vision. So you absolutely have the authority to vote on that. Um, I will say that we did, we did offer any commissioners that had any questions or concerns to meet with us over the last couple of weeks and we didn't get anybody that had called and had any questions or concerns. Um, on the next, on the first section, I'll let Joe respond to. Um, on the next, on the first section, I'll let Joe respond to the parking one, but on the definition for administrative review, I know we talked about that, and we also talked about if we added the language in there, which we did, it's in there, that says that the director can make those decisions, or his or her designee under the guidance of the director. And we did add that language, and that was talked about at the workshop, and it, and I was under the impression, and I could be wrong, that that was acceptable.
And, and s- on that specific point, if that is acceptable to city council, then it's acceptable to me. Because they're the ones who are responsible for that.
And I just would add, um, I, 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 we also have, I feel we also have to be disrespectful of the director a- as a person, and whoever's in that role, Robin now, whoever's in that role, the director gets to go on vacation, gets to take time off, and so it is very reasonable and responsible for us to presume that that time is being taken off, and that somebody should be able to, to um, under her guidance, um, step in and provide um those approvals. Additionally, in regards to those administrative approvals, that is, it is a big um responsibility, but it was, it's not dissimilar, uh, and you correct me if I'm wrong, it looks like there's actually more accountability built in, because some things that were previously outright permitted now have an extra layer of review from a trained individual with the appropriate experience and certifications that have been appointed by our city council. Uh, because it is an appointed position, so um, I, I hear you, and I respect that, and I just, my stance is different, is I think that the language that's included here does reflect um the language from the workshop, and I think is sound.
Okay, so I, if, if I could revisit the, the idea of where the vision came from, um, it's still not clear to me if the vision originated as an industry practice within the planning and zoning community, or if it came from the consultant, or if it came from city council. Um, a- and, and it's like, for me, that makes me uncertain on uh whether it is uh the real vision for the city of Caldwell, and I'm like, I don't think I have a lot of information, and that's what makes me uncomfortable voting on that.
Sure, sure. Um, I'll just comment. So what we've written into the code is to implement the vision of the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan vision was written through public outreach, so the vision was written by community members. Um, it was through surveys, it was through online interact, interactive, interactive activities, if I can talk. Um, it was also through several workshops. Um, I know that we did have um, somebody come to the public hearing and said they thought our data was skewed on the number of public participants, but they were basing that on the number of people that signed in at the workshops, which we were very actually kind of different than most people who do a comp plan, because they get more attendees at workshops. We actually got more attendees that did one-on-one interviews, and actually online surveys and online interactivities and comments. Um, and so that's where most of our numbers came from. Um, but again, you can, you can publish and invite the public to come out and talk, but you cannot force a horse to drink the water, so.
And I, and I, I, I'm sorry. And so, uh, when you guys had it at the train depot, right, I thought that was a very good turnout. And I thought that was well done, as far as the vision, and, and for allowing the public to put in their vision for the different, um, the different areas you guys had set out in there, so, I, I mean, you're right. Take anything, right? You can do a lot of this, but if you don't show up and actually do anything, then you need to just sit down.
And I believe it was a sincere effort, but in looking at the total numbers of people that participated relative to the size of the city, i- it was a very small effort, and it, and it was well populated by activists.
I got one more. Look at the number of people that vote in this city.
Absolutely.
So go ahead, that's, that's almost a mic drop right there, so I mean.
Same ratio.
Yeah, and, and the rea- the rea- reality of it all, to the point is, th- those, that is the information that we had, right? And, and I don't think that this conversation right now is to relitigate the comprehensive plan. Um, that's not on our agenda. It, with that said, the comprehensive plan has been adopted by the city and serves as the vision. Um, and it, my take is that it's the responsi- it, it's the responsibility of staff to provide information to, to us, and then ultimately the council, to create ordinances that allow for future development. Because if we don't have those ordinances in place to deal with situations that come up, then we're left uh, we're left unbalanced in that situation. Certainly, where this, this is in the end-all-be-all, where these ordinances can be changed as things come up, but this allows for a streamlining of the duly adopted, adopted comprehensive plan.
Commissioner Whitbeck, did you have something?
Only that I've studied all the documents, I don't know a lot about everything, but from what I've studied, I appreciate all the work, and I see no issues.
The, the other thing, and I, and I respect that we have public comment, I do, I do wanna call out that, that uh situation. Um, I hear you, I, for me, with that, it seems like a very lot-specific situation. I think the conversation that we're having is uh broader, because the implications of, of making the change in one area is gonna have citywide um implications, and I, and I think that uh, I appreciate that, I would encourage continuing talking with staff and seeing what could come up, but I think that seems very lot-specific, and, and opening up some of the recommendations suggested would um, yeah, would have just bigger effects throughout the community of Caldwell.
Other questions or comments from commissioners?
And if I could circle back.
Commissioner Whitbeck.
Excuse me. If I could circle back, it is my understanding, and I believe it's what Rob- Robin said, that the comprehensive plan is what created and set the vision, and the zoning is to be in alignment with that, so that it's able to enfor- enforce that vision.
Yes, sir.
So it seems to me that they're much in alignment, they're not separate issues.
Yes, sir, and if I may, Commissioner, uh, the, if you do not implement the, if you do not codify some of the things that we're codifying from the vision, it, some jurisdictions don't, as an example. They have the comp plan, it's beautiful, they'll spend all this time and money on it, but then they don't go and change the ordinances, which is something that the city has unfortunately not done at times. Well, then that vision is just a vision. You can't implement something that is not codified. At the end of the day, the comp plan is not codified. The only way to actually do that vision is with these ordinances, and that's where we've proposed these changes and, and to implement that vision. And then even some of that nice fluffy language that is included in these, you know, authority statements, the purpose statements, things like that, that is purposeful as well, to help implement and guide that specific vision for that section based off of feedback, based off of the comp plan, based off of all kinds of conversations that planning staff has for the vision of these areas, and, and residential uses, commercial uses, et cetera. So I just wanted to point that out, that to Commissioner Whitbeck's point, yes, that is why we're doing this.
And, sorry, Chair and Commissioners, just to add to what Joe said, the, the bigger thing with that too is that if you don't codify the codes to implement that vision, then when a project comes in, they're not in conformance with your comprehensive plan, and the statutes require that they be in conformance with your comprehensive plan. So it's kind of a, a catch-twenty-two, you, you have to do it, or development can't happen.
I, I see your hand, I'm sorry, we closed public testimony though, uh, already? We, we've closed the public testimony, I would encourage you to speak with staff uh after, after the meeting. Um, and I would just, oh, oh, go ahead, Commissioner.
Sorry, Chair, yeah, yeah, just a quick question for you, so I think, and overall, I'm with with most everyone here, that I think the code's mostly good. The question that I would ask, and I don't know if you've gotten anything, is if developers have said that our new requirements are too strict for them. Um, because although I want us to have really good boundaries, I don't wanna make it so difficult that we can't have development happen. Um, and we talked about one of the developments, where we said, hey, we want, or at least I said, I won't speak for the rest of the, the committee, that we want to let the, it just do its thing, and let capitalism happen, and let whoever highest bidder win, and the scenario that needs to meet the need will meet the need, because the person who's supposed to buy the land will buy it, and it will help the city. Um, do you feel that you guys have gotten feedback from developers in the valley that have said they can't develop now because of these code adjustments that will soon to go on to council and be approved or denied?
Sure. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Larson, we've actually gotten a decent amount of feedback over the past year plus, and continually daily, you know, that they, they're sending emails, they're asking questions. We have gotten specific feedback. Uh, I believe even during the workshop, you guys had some from uh Brighton. We implemented some of those changes, because we had that discussion, which is why we always implore the community, public as well, to give us your ideas. We are in a vacuum sometimes, it's just the nature of the job, right? We're seeing it from our perspective, because we're the planning professionals. We want the feedback, so we've taken that, and generally, overall, no, no one has said, oh, we can't do this, this is gonna kill this project or whatever, nobody has told us that, for any of the changes that we've made, no. Um, there's been other changes in general of like, hey, this would be a lot easier if you made it this way, hey, did you think about X? Hey, what if you did Y instead? I think it meets the same intent. We're like, you know what, you're right, that's actually true. We can do it this way instead, and now it's a benefit to everybody, versus harboring one person to benefit the other, you know? So we've definitely gotten feedback, we actually have done a workshop with the development community, that went over mostly the multifamily and landscaping, which are generally really impactful to developers. And there was really good feedback. Actually, we were told, one, they were very, very glad and impressed that we even held the workshop. And two, that they thought the changes would actually be a really good change for the city, and bring better, more successful development. So that's the general feedback we've gotten.
Thank you, thank you, Chair.
Uh, other commission deliberation comments? Not, I would entertain a motion?
Sorry, one last thing. I, I, I wanted to go over uh Butros's parking thing. I kind of agree with him, but I don't, I don't think that we can determine how to count those, when I'm a developer and I'm developing and I'm building a house with two parking garages, even though every person I know except for myself can't park in a garage, and I can park in all three of my bays. Most people can't, and so I don't know if that's fair to the developer who's gonna put up all this money to help develop the land, to say that those housing, parking garages are gonna be used for something else. Even though I, I do believe that that, they will be used for storage, so.
Just an assumption.
Yeah.
I mean, and then additionally, is what does that development actually look like? Is there there's extra big concrete slabs, like, are we, then we're changing the aesthetics, and we want our, do we want our community to be filled, our neighborhoods filled with extra big um
Concrete?
Concrete slabs, because they would have to accommodate if we're not counting the garage or just meant for it, and, yeah.
Yeah.
But nonetheless, uh, is there any motion?
Willing to make a motion right now?
I'll make a move to approve the recommendation for approval based upon the testimony evidence in the record for this matter, and upon finding of facts and conclusion of law set forth herein Dubai. Determined to move as follows, the request for Z O A twenty-five dash one zoning ordinance text amended is recommended for approval subject to the conditions of approval as presented or amended.
A second, there was a motion for Commissioner Larson, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Commissioner Harmon. Um, roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Harmon?
Yes.
Is it more?
Yes.
Butros?
No. Yes.
And with that, motion carries, um, so we will finish there, and with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Commissioner Whitbeck, was that a second from Larson?
Yes.
Alright, all with favor, say aye?
Aye.
Alright.